I'm going to call the Municipal Planning Commission meeting for City of Fairview. Today is March the 11th, 2014, and it's 7:00 PM. Let's all stand for the opening prayer and pledge. Mr. Hall, will you lead us in prayer, please?
Thank you, sir. Pray with me, please. Most gracious heaven and father, we indeed thank for this beautiful day we've had today. And thank you for many blessings of life. We ask you to be with us tonight to make the decisions this board makes for the betterment of our city. These things I ask in Jesus' name.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, item two on the agenda is the approval of the agenda, and I will need to add something. Under item seven in Old Business, I'd like to add Planning Commission Training Session, and that will be 7A under Old Business. Do I have a motion for approval?
No.
Second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Next is Citizen Comments. Larry, do we have any?
There are no citizens' comments tonight, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Item four, Approval of Minutes. We have two to look at. 4.1 is the February 11th regular meeting. Anybody have any?
Move to approve.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
4.2, the February 19th Special Called Meeting. Do I have a motion?
No.
All in favor?
Aye.
Number five, Recommendations. We have none. Number six, Bonds. 6.1, Western Woods Village Performance Bond to Cover the Roads, Sidewalks, and Storm Drainage. It's set at $155,300. Planning Commission set the bond on February 12th, 2008. The bond was reduced to $106,000 at the February 10th, 2009 meeting, and the bond expires March 14th, 2014.
We did like to make one addition to that, or correction, rather. That bond was actually reduced again.
Okay.
We didn't realize that at the time we made this agenda, but it's, the bond is actually for $80,240, and we do have the paperwork in our office that that has been extended to March 14th, 2015.
Okay, excellent. Larry, we don't need to vote on this, right?
No, sir, there's no action required now that we, the-
We know it's been extended.
You had previously approved calling the bond. If it was not renewed prior to the 15th, now that it has, we won't need to make a call and it needs no further action. They emailed me the bond extension, and it is an order up. I've seen it.
Perfect. Thank you. Okay, moving on, number seven, Old Business. This is the Planning Commission Training Session. Do I have approval to move forward with this? A motion?
Second.
You've already added it. You don't need to have a motion with that.
Thank you.
Just turn it over to Will and go.
Oh, you will.
That's scary, isn't it? As a result of really not having any agenda items other than the bond, which had already previously been addressed, Mr. Hall and Mr. Bledsoe and Mrs. Hall and I and Mr. Cantrell decided if you desired, it may be a good opportunity to spend maybe 45 minutes or so to get an hour of your four hours required training in just going over general, I guess, requirements or differences and understandings of your subregs and your zoning ordinance. And again, this was kind of done, thought of at the last minute, so I have, I'm certainly prepared to discuss, as you guys probably know, I can talk about this for a while. But what I'll do, I think what I have in mind is generally go over the differences of subregs and zoning ordinances, what makes them different, what's generally included in each of those documents, and then as, instead of me continuing to talk for several minutes, I may open it up for you guys if you have specific questions that you're interested in as a result of either my discussion initially or anything else that's come to light to you. I think that would be more beneficial to you than me just going on a tangent of what I think's important. So generally-
Well, if I can, just a second. I'm sorry. Mr. Chairman, I'm going to ask if I can be excused. I've been under the weather all day long, and I appreciate what you're doing. I'll make sure I get my time up and do it with you, so let me excuse, thank you.
You're sitting. I hope you get your feeling better.
Thank you.
I know you've had some tough times in the recent past, so I hope things continue to heal for you.
You can write it all in.
So the two documents that you've been, that you as a planning commission, and this is true across the state, have been tasked with enforcing is zoning ordinance and a subregs. Generally speaking, your zoning ordinance pertains to the use of land and how a specific parcel of land is going to be used. And you have three general distinctions, residential, commercial, and industrial. And again, those are broad distinctions. You have different classes within each of those three distinctions, and every parcel within the city limits is currently zoned into one of those distinctions, residential, commercial, or industrial. And so obviously, a residentially zoned parcel would have the use classification of allowing a residential structure. Some of your residential zones allow for just single-family residential structures. Some allow for single-family and multifamily structures. And so generally speaking, the more intense land use is considered to be a residential land use that allows multiple, multifamily uses and smaller lot sizes. So the more intense, the more dense a development is, then generally, the higher the residential classification is. Commercial zones are very similar, and then industrial zones also follow kind of the same suit. And each zone within it has what are called uses by right. And so a residentially zoned parcel in, say, the R-15 district, there's a list of uses of that property, if it's zoned R-15, that the property owner has a right without any further action by the planning commission or the elected officials to obtain a building permit and start building, you know, that, a structure that is in accordance with the use that is allowed by right. Also, all zoning classifications, residential, commercial, and industrial, have what's called a special exception use. Those special exception uses are generally thought to be a little more intensive than what the uses by right are, but they're not so intense that it wouldn't meet the characteristics of what's trying to be accomplished by that classification. So you think of home-based businesses. I know that's been an issue in the recent past. Home-based businesses who are having traffic come to their home, they are a special exception, and the thought process is, in order for the greater good to be protected, while we don't want to specifically outlaw a home-based business, we want to make sure that the neighbors are protected with some type of oversight by the planning commission. And so that, in that regard, it would be a special exception that an application would be made to the planning staff and then brought before you for consideration. And based on whatever the proposed business would be, you may decide that, yes, this is compatible with the surrounding areas, or no, it's not. Or yes, it is with these conditions. And so again, each classification has a use by right, then has a special exception use, and then if you're not found in one of those, if a particular use isn't found in one of those two lists, then by default, it's not allowed within that zoning classification. A fast-food restaurant would not be allowed in a residentially zoned district by no means whatsoever, not a special exception, certainly not by right or use by right. And we'll continue down the zoning ordinance. All of that would be under the zoning ordinance, the use of the land and what, and then the regulation of what's being placed on commercial and industrial uses of land, for instance, signs and dumpster enclosures and those types of things. Site plan reviews, what you see is site plan reviews for commercial and industrial sites and then large-scale multifamily. All the site plan considerations are found in the zoning ordinance, should be found in the zoning ordinance, let me state that, and would be regulated under the zoning ordinance. The zoning ordinance, in order to issue variances or in order for variances to be effective in the zoning ordinance, it must go before the Board of Zoning Appeals. The planning commission doesn't have the authority, and the Board of Commissioners doesn't have the authority to issue specific variances for a specific site that is requesting a variance under the zoning ordinance, not the subdivision regulations, the zoning ordinance. So again, the commercial sites, industrial sites, and the multifamily sites that submit site plans, if there's a variance from that site plan that's requested and the regulation falls in the zoning ordinance, then that variance should go to the Board of Zoning Appeals for review and either approval or denial. If there is a desire to revise the zoning ordinance, the, hang on, one more thing on variances of the zoning ordinance. The Board of Zoning Appeals doesn't even have the authority, nobody has the authority to issue variances from uses. So that fast-food restaurant example, the Board of Zoning Appeals has no authority to issue a variance to allow a fast-food restaurant in a residentially zoned, on a residentially zoned property. You cannot issue variances for the specific use. You can issue variances for setbacks, you can issue variances for, you know, paved parking areas. I'm not saying they should, I'm just saying those types of things are up for consideration, but the actual use of the property, nobody should be issuing variances to change the use, because in essence, what that is, is an actual rezoning of the property. And so in order to rezone a piece of property, as you're aware, applications are made, the planning commission acts as an advisory board to the Board of Commissioners, and you would make a recommendation to, in the positive for the rezoning, or you would make a recommendation in the negative for the rezoning. All rezonings before the Board of Commissioners acts must come before the planning commission for their recommendation. You don't have to approve, you don't have to give a positive recommendation, but you do have to be afforded the consideration and the recommendation to forward to them before they can act. The Board of Commissioners, before they can act, has to have a public hearing advertised appropriately according to state requirements, and then they, after the public hearing, can take action on that rezoning. The one distinction between a positive and a negative recommendation, because this is a question I get asked a lot, is, well, what happens if we send it forward with a negative recommendation? Some jurisdictions will end it there unless the applicant requests in writing to move forward to the Board of Commissioners with the rezoning request. Some automatically just send all of them, no matter what. You don't have it specified in any of your documents, but I think the practice has been the negative recommendation, then unless the staff or the city receives a written recommendation to move to the Board of Commissioners with that negative recommendation, then generally, that's where it ends. But certainly, the applicant has the right to request to move that forward. If it goes forward with a negative recommendation versus if it's a positive recommendation, the negative recommendation would require a majority vote of the entire membership of the legislative body, as opposed to a majority vote of the members that are present at a particular meeting, assuming there's a quorum. In your case, you only have five commissioners, four commissioners and a mayor, so there would be, there's really no difference. It takes three votes either way, so that's, that would be really of no difference based on the number of commissioners that you have. Now, I'm not saying that the commissioner shouldn't take under advisement what your recommendation is, but as far as the legal procedure, it doesn't change approvals or disapprovals at their level from an actual vote requirement standpoint. Certainly, they should consider, you know, your input on rezonings. That's the zoning ordinance. As a sidebar to the zoning ordinance, you have also a design review manual. The design review manual is kind of, I don't want to call it appendix because it is a standalone document, but it's in addition to your zoning ordinance. The design review manual is specific to, again, commercial and industrial and multifamily developments. Design review manual gets into specifics of aesthetics of a specific site pertaining to building materials, pertaining to cornice work and building facades, pertaining to sidewalk appearances, pertaining to HVAC and dumpster enclosures and buffering them from adjacent neighbors and that sort of thing. Again, the design review manual is not applicable to single-family residential uses, so this, I'm not saying and you are not doing enforcing building materials or the look or the size or anything associated with a single-family residential structure. The city does not regulate that in any way, and I would not recommend that you do that, and most cities do not do that. You don't, you don't regulate individual, single-family residential driveways. They can be gravel, they can be paved, they can be whatever material they want. So I want to make that clear, that the city does not regulate single-family residential sites as far as size of the home, how it looks, what material it's made of, anything along those lines. And the other point of clarity, and I'll move on to the subregs. Does anybody have some water that Mike could get? Thank you.
I think there's one.
The, and it's been discussed in this forum before, but private covenants or private restrictions for subdivision, if they adopt them themselves, if the developer at the time he develops the property forms a homeowner's association and the, thank you, John, and the homeowner's association typically, when it's initiated, includes the developer, and that's it, because he hasn't sold any lots, so there's no other people that are voting At the time that he establishes that HOA, he will generally draft covenants and restrictions for that specific subdivision. Those covenants and restrictions are recorded, should be recorded in the Registered Deeds Office, County Registered Deeds Office, and those are private restrictions. So if there, if a neighborhood has a restriction against above-ground swimming pools or livestock or, and private restrictions can dictate square footage of home, minimum square footage of homes, mailbox types, any private restrictions that are recorded by an HOA or developer or anyone associated with the property are just that private. The city has no authority or no desire or responsibility to enforce those items. And so any issue that would come up of an individual that lives in one of those subdivisions that would make a claim against something that's being done on a neighbor's property, that claim would be against that other individual, and the city would not be involved whatsoever. Any questions on the zoning ordinance side of things?
I've got a question.
Sure.
If, since the design review manual is part of the zoning regulations, would, if someone wanted a variance, would they then go to the Board of Zoning and Appeals?
That would be my general response, yes.
Okay.
There's some overlap in all three of the documents, so, and that's something that I think you're, the committee that's been put together to look at some of the city's codes and that sort of thing. One of the things I believe that they're looking at, and I would encourage them to, is to look at the, any overlap that is in the three documents, to do their best in determining which of the three it should be in, and then either collectively removing from the other two and placing strictly in the document that it should be in, and then that way, you've removed any gray area or discrepancies that may be present in some of the documents. So yes, generally, the design review manual would include site-specific criteria that would fall under the zoning ordinance and therefore would be a BZA-type approval. A lot of the design review manual is recommended and suggested and preferred type language. There is some that is mandatory, but a lot of it is recommended, suggested, and preferred type, and so it's supposed to offer a guide to developers that here is what this particular city has deemed as being important aesthetically, and this is what they would like to see in their developments that come before them from a commercial and industrial and multifamily standpoint. And when I say multifamily, I'm generally referring to apartment complexes, not duplexes or even, you know, triplexes, but generally apartment complexes or condominiums if that would be the case. Any other questions?
Will?
Yes.
Could you give us a definition relating to the term highest and best use, how it covers each one of the zoning classifications?
Highest and best use generally refers to the future land use plan and the context in which the future land use plan is being considered. And so what, where I see that term primarily is when a city is trying to determine, okay, let's look at a 20-year, a 30-year, a 50-year plan, usually it's 20, 25-year plan, something along those lines. Let's look at a plan of that length, and let's try to identify areas of the city that are either capable now or will be capable fairly easily to support more intense uses than what may currently be, it may be zoned for. So if you're looking at, for instance, the interchange, either, well, I guess we can go to the interchange at Interstate 40. You know, there's some land there that prior to the interchange being there would not have, it would not have been a highest and best use to be, you know, a convenience center for over-the-road hauling trucks or a diesel station or even a hotel or something along those lines. When the interchange came in, then at looking at your future land use plan, then you would have changed, okay, the highest and best use for this property being right, obviously right adjacent to, and I'm not talking about any specific parcel, but in general, that area, the highest and best use for that area as a result of an interstate interchange would probably be something along the lines of a commercial or even industrial-type use. And so that's where I see it most, is when the, when you're trying, when a city's trying to determine a future land use plan and what would be the highest and best use for this property, and then also certainly with a rezoning-type application. When you have a rezoning application, one of, if not the first thing that should take place is, let's, let's refer to our future land use plan and see what, how we generally thought this area would play out in the next 20, 25 years. And if you've identified it in your future land use plan as a potential commercial or industrial use, then that would help guide you in your recommendation to the Board of Commissioners on what may be a good, a good of the highest and best use for that property. Is that kind of what you're looking for? When you, and there's no real defined term, it's really you're taking into account all the variables associated with the land, primarily with infrastructure. Are the streets capable of supporting a higher or more intense use? Is the water and sewer capable of supporting a higher and intense use? Is the, is the land itself, is it, is it riddled with sinkholes or with a blue line stream or a FEMA-recognized stream that has a very wide or large floodplain area? And, you know, when you start looking at those specific variables, then you can really kind of pinpoint, well, I don't really, you know, there's no way that this, this general area could support, you know, eighth of an acre, quarter-acre lots over 500 acres because of whatever all these variables may come to fruition when you're in your analysis. So that's generally kind of what, how I see highest and best use. Anything else on the zoning? So again, in order to rezone a property, it has to come to you. The same is true for any amendments to the zoning ordinance. If the Board of Commissioners desires to change the language in the zoning ordinance, to add a new residential classification or to change a minimum lot size for an existing classification, any proposed change also has to come to the planning commission for your recommendation. If the planning commission desires to, for lack of a better term, push a change up the ladder, you can certainly do that. Board of Commissioners doesn't have to act on it, but if you see something in your zoning ordinance, in the city's zoning ordinance, that you feel necessary for the Board of Commissioners to address, then you can certainly pass along a recommendation from this board to them on what you would recommend to be revised. They can entertain it, they can say, no, we don't want to mess with it, or they can say, yeah, that seems good, and send it back to you for some more specifics or maybe to study it a little more, something along those lines. But again, any changes to zoning ordinance or zoning map rezonings would require your recommendation, and Board of Commissioners could act on that after a public hearing. Subdivision regulations are a little bit of a different beast. They, the planning commission has the sole authority over subdivision regulations. Board of Commissioners or city councils or county commissions, they have really no, no input, they can have input, but they have no voting authority to amend or change subdivision regulations. Again, similar to what you can do to push suggested changes on zoning ordinances, they can come to you with a suggestion to either revise or look at changing something in your subregs, but ultimately, the planning commission has the final say on anything within the subdivision regulations. Subdivision regulations generally pertain to the division of land, what is exactly what it says. And so any land that's being divided would fall under the purview of the subdivision regulations. They, they would include aspects of division of land that pertain to the infrastructure that would serve that division of land, roads and utilities is generally what's, excuse me, is generally what is included in that purview. Included in utilities would be stormwater considerations, so that would be a part of- of, you know, reviewing a subdivision. In Tennessee, a subdivision by definition, a subdivision, and I probably should just read it to you, but I'm going to try off the top of my head. A subdivision is defined as the division of property into two or more parcels with one or two, one of the following requirements. That one or both of the parcels is, is, or, if any of the parcels that are being divided fall below five acres, then it technically is defined as a subdivision. If, if the parcels all are greater than five acres, but there are infrastructure improvements or extensions required, a water, a public water line has to be extended, a road has to be constructed to access these five-acre lots, sewer line has to be extended, if any of that is present and the lots are greater than five acres, then that too would meet the definition of subdivision. So there's two criteria you're looking for, the size of the lots, and if the infrastructure, if any additional infrastructure is required. Anything less than five acres, even if there's no infrastructure required, meets the definition of subdivision. In your subdivision regulations, you allow, as we discussed last month, you allow for administrative approval for divisions of land into no more than two lots in which none of those infrastructure requirements are met. So if you've got a four-acre site that fronts on an existing public street, that has a, a public water line that runs all along that public street, has a public sewer line that runs along that public street, and it meets the lot-size requirements and the lot front edge along that public street, then you and your subdivision regulations allow for the administrative approval of those types. Can, it can be no more than two lots. So I'm dividing four acres into two two-acre lots, then administratively, that can be approved. They still have to submit a plat, the staff would review that plat to make sure none of those criteria are, are thresholds are met, but then they can move forward with approving that plat, and then the plat go and be recorded. In addition to that, you have two designations, a minor subdivision plat and a major subdivision plat. And I am going to have to look up the definition of these because there are some varying definitions in the zoning regulations, I'm sorry, in the subdivision regulations. One is, is in the definitions, and there's one in the front, in which it fi, it defines major and minor. Major subdivision. Bear with me. A division of land into two or more lots that include any of the following, two or more lots, any of the following, not all of them, any of them, a new or extended street or street right-of-way. So if a new street's being proposed, a new public street's being proposed, then that would fall under the major subdivision category. Any improvements within an existing street right-of-way, other than repair, construction of sidewalks, or other pedestrian connections, and other than installment of a fire hydrant. Somebody's got to add a turn lane on an existing street, then that would be considered a major subdivision, even if it was two lots. Again, according to, to what's in your book. And there's four criteria. The third one is a future public school site, park site, greenway corridor, or open space site shown on the adopted city development plan. I've never seen that, I don't anticipate seeing it here, so, but it is one of the criteria. Obviously, it's fairly rare that, that, that those types of events take place. The dedication of a right-of-way or easement for construction of public water distribution or sewerage collection lines. The dedication of a right-of-way or an easement. So, if an easement is required to extend a public sewer line across one lot so it can serve another, because it doesn't exist, that, that sewer line, then that would be a major subdivision. Here's the key, the state defines public sewer as, the state does not include individual lot service lines as falling under that definition of public sewer. If I'm running a individual service line, water or sewer, across a property to get to another property, and all it serves is that and the meter's back here, then that, that would not fall under the definition of a public sewer or public water. So individual service lines are not included in that definition. And that's the four criteria, I'm sorry, five, there's one more. Dedication, reservation, improvements, or environmental conditions that in the opinion of the enforcing officer require construction documents to be reviewed prior to final plan approval in order to ensure protection of public health, safety, and welfare. In essence, to boil it down, any division of land that's going to require improvements that would need construction plans to serve the entirety or a portion of those lots that are being created are generally going to fall in the major subdivision category. All, and then basically, it defaults and said, a division of land where the conditions for major subdivision review are not present is defined as a minor subdivision. So, so basically, it's a catch-all that says, anything that doesn't meet one of those five criteria would be considered a minor subdivision, so. Real quickly, as cursory as I can, major subdivision plats would require a, in general, would require some type of conceptual plan review, some type of construction plan, or, or, yeah, improvements plan review, and then a final plat review. Again, that's very general, there's, there's very specific and very detailed procedures that are outlined in, in your subregs, and you're welcome to, to look over those. As opposed to a minor subdivision would not necessarily require a conceptual plan, or a preliminary plat is what it's commonly referred to, even though that term isn't technically found in your subregs, it's a very common term used. A minor subdivision would not require that, and would not require construction plans because by definition, a minor subdivision would not have any proposed either public infrastructure or infrastructure improvements that would meet that criteria of water, sewer, or roads. So, that's the general outline of your subregs. As I stated, subregs are at the sole discretion and authority and enforcement of the Planning Commission. Any variances from subregs can be granted by the Planning Commission, would not go to the Board of Zoning and Appeals, and would not go to the Board of Commissioners. Variances would be considered by the Planning Commission, and there are specific criteria that, that are to be considered when, when variances are requested. Variances should come to you in the form of a written outline of what those variances are with specific references to the requirements in the subregs. Generally, I think you've, you've held to the fact that if, if the variance is indicated on the plat itself, then that constitutes written, written request. That's the practice I understand you've, you've, you to fi, you to have followed in, in the past, so. Plats must be considered within 60 days. If the Planning Commission does not render a decision within 60 days, then the applicant has the authority to move forward as the plat, as though the plat was approved. And that's state statute. That's not a fair view code, that's state statute. You have to act on that, that plat within 60 days, unless the applicant agrees, obviously, and I would suggest to you in writing, to extend that timeframe, then, then, then that's, that's the criteria for the 60 days. The 60 days starts at the first meeting in which the Planning Commission hears, or that item is on their agenda. So, it doesn't start when they submit their initial application, it, it doesn't start until the meeting date in which you first have that item on the agenda, so. And I've about exhausted what I can on just the general overviews. Are there any specific questions pertaining to divisions of land or subdivision regulations, or, or Mr. Cantrell, if you had any input you wanted to add, we could certainly move that direction?
Let's get your questions first, if there's any questions. Apparently, the ordinance, I only have a, a few comments. I had the easy part of this tonight to, to tell Mr. Biata, give it to Will and let him go, then I sit here and listen, and I don't mean to be, uh, shooting at, at Will's presentation, I think he did an excellent job. It's always easier to sit there and then bird-dog something than it is to do it to start with. And if I say anything, Will, that, that you don't agree with, please speak up and we'll discuss it. I'm not going to take a whole lot of time, but just a few things I wanted to bring up. This is something that I always near and dare to boards' hearts, and I've mentioned this before, but I'll mention it again. Our state statute that's under the Uniform Tort Claims Liability Act says that any board member, it's, if you read the history of this thing in relation to boards, they say it's absolutely essential that you have board members who can make their decisions and not be concerned with, somebody don't like your decision, so they're going to sue you. You have absolute immunity granted by state statute for those decisions that you make in the course of, in this case, being a member of the Planning Commission, and in furtherance of that charge that you have. In other words, you make a decision on a subdivision and I don't like it, well, that's tough. I mean, you were acting in the, in the furtherance of your, your job. It does not preclude you, if, say, Mr. Manor wanted to come down here and punch me out during the meeting, he, he might want to do that, but, and he could do that, but he wouldn't have immunity for that, that type of action. There's no way you could consider that as a furtherance of, of his duty on the board and in the scope of, of that action. I don't think he's going to do that. I just used him as an example because I knew he wouldn't care, or maybe he would like to punch me out. But I just, I use that as a ridiculous example, but as long as you're acting in the scope of what you were appointed to do, and in furtherance of that, your, your deliberation on this item that's on there, then you've got absolute immunity. I'm, I'm bringing all that up to mention something else that, that Will said that is absolutely true. I'd just like to extend it a little further. He's talking about what the creator of the Homeowners Association can do in relation to type of materials used, the square footage of the building, no two-story buildings or whatever. And he made the comment, and he's right, that not many, you're not going to see many cities that attempt to regulate that. I would take, take a little step further and say, no city is going to do that. If they are any of them doing that, they're playing with a ticking time bomb because it's a direct violation of the Federal Fair Housing Act statute. And that's one that we're, that we're not immune from. If you intentionally violate the Fair Housing Act, you, and, and you intentionally do this, you can be prosecuted in federal court and actually receive incarceration time for it. And I could for letting, sitting here and letting you do it. So, we're not going to do that. I can assure you that we're not going to do that. But what the Fair Housing Act basically does, and it's a huge act, but what it basically does is says that the local governments, or the state governments, or anything that is subsidiary to the United States government, and we all are under the supremacy clause of the Constitution, you can't do things that might adversely or in any way manipulate the cost of housing such that you'll require this in this area, and this in this area so that you can economically segregate the populations by any way, any means. Now, the reason that the Homeowners Association can do that, they're not the government. If I don't want to buy there, if you've got a restriction I don't like, I can go buy somewhere else. But if what it, what it amounts to is that, that the government can't regulate that type of thing. And I, I put that out just to let you know that it's, that it's there, and that's the reason you won't see anybody doing that. Under the subdivision regulations is one of the things that Will pointed out that is absolutely your purview, you pass them, you adopt them, and that's not to imply that you don't listen to what's going on, but the final act is yours. The other document that you have that is solely the purview of this Planning Commission is the land use map. That is by statute a creature of the Planning Commission. You can get all the input you want, but you're the person that, this is the board that actually enacts that. For everything else that I can think of off the top of my head, you're, you're very important, but you're an advisory board, the other two, you're legislative board. Just say, one other thing about the, the zoning of what goes into this area and that area. Is it an intrusion on the property owner's rights? Absolutely, has been ever since it was first created, and it's been the, the topic of many discussions, and the topic of much legislation and much litigation. But the thought was that in, in doing this organized development, it's for the overall good of the community, and therefore it's allowed. There are some things that you're prohibited from doing, as Will was talking about, you can have exceptions, you can have conditional uses. I believe I'm correct in this, although it's not zoned for it, your sat, your zoning ordinance allows for the location of a church, religious facility, and/or a school in any zoning area. There's some things you can do, there's some things you can't do. If it's a policing problem about traffic and stuff, you can still control that, but you can't, you can't just deny me the location of one of those type entities because I'm zoned all residential. The thing, the thought being that it's important enough that people have schools and churches that you can locate them in, in, in any zone, but they do have to come in and have a, a conditional use. The other thing, let's see, variances, and then I'll, I'll hush. Just wanted to mention that sometimes variances are, are, are very important, and they're always important to the person that's asking for them. They can be very important to the city. Some variances even, believe it or not, make a lot of sense. I'm doing something that, what negative effect it has on, on your ordinance, or on your zoning, or whatever you're getting the variance for, the overall good to the community outweighs what negative you have. The only thing that I would say is I would never advise this board to, to take any variance lightly regardless of how light it may seem when you first read it. It's important to someone, or they wouldn't have gone to the problem to do it. The second thing is, I would always look at these variances, not with a jaundiced eye of turning them down, but consider, in, in great detail, what they're asking for, and what it's going to do to your, to your particular document that you're granting the variance for, because any variance that is granted will in some way, to some extent weaken that regulation that you're, that you're doing, because you're charged with being fair and impartial, you're charged with, with not making arbitrary and capricious decisions, and if you approve a variance for me over here, and, and with all good intentions, the, generally, the government is not stuck with being a stopped for its actions, but in fundamental fairness and not being arbitrary and capricious. If Mr. Tim comes in and wants to do the same thing on the other side of town, you've weakened your, you've weakened your, your regulation to a point that, is it not at least considerable to be arbitrary and capricious if you let me do it on one side of town and him not on the other side of town? Now, you may have a good reason for not doing it, but if you do, articulate that reason when you, when you turn him down, because people look at these things. This is a very, this is a very important advisory board, and people will look at what you do, because, and they should, because if it's, if it's good on this side of town, if, if the conditions are the same except for being in spot A instead of spot B, then, you know, consider that. If you have a, a good reason for allowing it on this side of town and not on the other, then by all means, don't, don't grant it. But I'm just saying, anytime that you're asked to, to approve a variance, look at it and be sure that, that, that you're on good ground when you do it, because if you just routinely, and this board has been really good about that in the past, if you just routinely approve any variance I throw up there, then you are going, you will ultimately weaken your, your regulations till they just, they don't mean anything. That's all I have, Mr. Will, you, appreciate what you, you. Appreciate what you, you were right on point with your comments, and I think it'd be a help to the board, and I'm sure we'll have some other things to get your other three hours. We won't try to get them all tonight.
One thing that came to mind, you guys are familiar with bonds, it was the only thing that you had on the agenda tonight. Bonds are required on the subdivision side of things to protect not only the city, but to also protect future purchasers of lots within a subdivision. Three, four years ago, a number of communities across the state, a number of which, you know, I have, well, lived in, Rutherford County went through it, and then a number that I assist with, had issues where developers posted a bond, got their final plat approved, got it recorded. There was public streets that were to be constructed, there was public sewer and water that was, I mean, I'm talking, you know, 50, 100 lot subdivisions that have brand-new roads, extensive roads, curbs and sidewalks and drainage systems, you know, even traffic lights and such. And what wound up happening was, a developer of a subdivision has two avenues they can pursue. One is they can, prior to final plat approval, they can either have all of the proposed improvements installed to the satisfaction of the authority that's reviewing and approving those improvements, whether it's a road superintendent or water and sewer general director, general manager of water and sewer, in your case, water authority Dixon County. They can have all those improvements installed and approved and signed off on, and then the plat can be recorded and lots can be sold. No bond is required under that scenario because all the improvements have already been installed. There's no risk of those improvements not being installed. And so therefore, there's no risk to a city that those improvements would default to the city's basically responsibility. And the property owners that are buying lots, there's no risk to them because they have the road that accesses those lots, they have the utilities that serve those lots. The other avenue is to post bonds. Again, if it is determined that infrastructure improvements are in fact required, then in lieu of installing those improvements, a developer may post a bond that would cover the cost of those improvements and then go ahead and have the plat recorded and sell lots. What that bond does is it should guarantee that if the developer goes bankrupt or decides not to do it or just skips town altogether, that bonding company has insured to the city that they will come in and finish the improvements as shown on plans that were approved by a planning commission or approved by city staff. They will come in and make those improvements at their cost up to the bond amount. So that's why it's important that we assess bond amounts in an appropriate manner. And I think you do, I think you do a good job, I think you have a good formula. What wound up happening to a number of communities were, they failed to renew those bonds as they expired. And so subdivisions that came online four, five, six years ago that had bonds posted initially, and everybody was blowing and going, and people were moving right and left, and the housing market was tremendous, then everything came to halt, and developers, say, two, three years down the road, developers basically decided, I can't complete this. And so filed bankruptcy, and jurisdictions, counties and cities alike had instances where bonds were failed to be renewed. And in some cases, those jurisdictions were deemed responsible for finishing out those improvements. One of the things that I think, since I've been here, that you've done a good job of is maintaining a record of those bonds and taking action to call those bonds if deemed necessary, if they are not renewed in a timely manner. So again, I think that's something that you should be proud of, and I think that that's something that procedurally has been a good practice for this city. I think that's about all I have on that. Any specific questions, again, of anything? Even if it's nothing I've covered, if it's something that's come to mind in previous meetings. If I don't have an answer, I'll find it for you or do what I can.
Well, I just had a question for Mr. Cantrell. When you were speaking about the variances to the zoning, et cetera, and I guess, one thing I haven't seen is, when the planning commission makes a decision, either pro or con against something or for it, that there's no findings of fact that gets entered into the record, that why did you make that decision? So is that something we can put into this, or?
That's something that you need to have, because in some instances, the findings of fact can be gleaned from the discussion. But it would be good at the end, at least before the vote is taken, to say, in addition, we find, or we're going to grant the variance, it would be good to say, we're going to do it for the following reasons. We're going to deny the variance, we're going to do it for the following reasons. Because what happens is, if someone should appeal that, and by the way, the appeal on a variance decision from here is not to the board commissioners, is not to the board of zoning appeals, is to the chance record and, or the circuit court, they have concurrent jurisdiction. And what you'd end up doing, you first have to forward a certified copy of the record up there. If you can glean that, what your reason was from that record, then you go from there. The court could bring everybody in and have another hearing. What they generally do if they can't get it from the record is they send it back down and say, want me referenced? You will specifically list your findings of fact. And I would suggest that as an operating procedure, that you list those reasons for either denying it or granting it, because you never know when something might get appealed. Obviously, probably if you grant the variance, it's not going to get appealed. If the man, I said the man, if the person asked for a variance, gets it and then appeals, I've got a real easy job, go there and say, Judge, I don't know why I appealed it, they gave me this variance, whatever you want to do will be fine with us. But the ones you would get would be where the variance was not granted. There is a very limited time in which you can do that. It goes up on a common law writ of certiorari, and you've got 60 days from the date that that decision is rendered to get that filed with the court. And if you don't, it's waived. Well, I would like to say a couple of things about bonds, and I apologize to Will, and these are the last things I'm going to say. If he says something else, I'm not going to comment on it. But the bonds are, the city bonds are for, as he said, for the infrastructure, the roads, the sewers and the water and this type of thing. It is not to ensure the development of that subdivision in accordance with the plans that you approved X number of lots, because that's not the city's business. There were some, I know, and I won't call the county, but there were some rather large subdivisions that had several lots in there, several houses in various and sundry states of disrepair, really because they were not weathered in. That's not the city's concern unless it becomes so bad that they have to go knock them down. But what the concern was, the curbs and gutters were not in, the streets, some of them had binder down and, you know, manhole covers sticking up three or four inches and people having to drive around them, and it was a mess. I don't know what they ever did with it. Since I've been here, I have written several letters calling bonds, and generally, they got them renewed. You have to look at the bond instrument to see, does it have to be in their hands on the day that it expires, or does it have to be mailed on the day that it's expired in a manner in which you can prove that it was mailed, which is generally certified mail or registered mail, whichever one you want to use. I've had three or four, probably in the time I've been here, where we called the bonds, and they did get in here and renew them before the time, but I had to have those things at that place before that date, and then we had to come back to the planning commission and ask them to rescind the call. I've had two that we actually had to proceed on. One was a subdivision here in town that had all the water, had all the sidewalks, had all the curbs and gutters, but they did not finish the paving. Fortunately, one of the provisions in that development contract is that they have to, if the completion, they have to dedicate the streets to the public, to the city, free and clear of lins. And this individual went out and got a paving company to come in and pave all this stuff, rather large amount of money, once for me, but it was in excess of $100,000, and didn't pay them. And fortunately, the people that did this had a really good, did a really good, some really good research and had a good piece of lawyering. They went out, and see, the streets hadn't been dedicated to the city yet, so they went out and filed a lien on the streets, which put the development in the direct breach of the development contract, because they couldn't dedicate the streets to the city without them being lien-free. So they tried to call a bond, and the bonding company, I think Justice Sowe, came back and said, you can't call a bond, and the bond wasn't made in your favors, made in favor of the city. So the city filed to intervene and said, look, you're right, it wasn't made to them, it was made to us, but your contract said that we would get those streets free of lins, and you can't do that unless the bonding company pays that paving company. And they paid them, they released the lins, and we got the streets. But if it hadn't been, that was one where you not only have to have a bond, but you had to have a good development contract also. The second one that was called since I was here, and then I promise y'all shut up and let's go home or whatever you need to do. The second one you're sitting in, this building right here. I had been working for the city about, I don't know, six, eight months. And the building was, some of you that were around here will probably remember it, but the developer, the contractor was building the building, got the building up, got it semi-weathered in, it was leaking profusely around the dome up here, but he ultimately ended up taking bankruptcy. And if we didn't, if it hadn't have been for the bond, and that was one to complete the building, the city board commissioners at the time had issued that, had the forethought to require a bond, and fortunately, it was with a rather large insurance company, who on the first day when they came here said, don't worry, we're going to finish it, we got the money, we can get out of it, we're going to have to finish it. And they did, but it was a mess. So I've had two bonds that we've actually proceeded to call and go through with, the full settlement of the bond and the whole issue in, what, 10, 12 years.
And one other thing on bonds, real quick. It's not a situation where, if you authorize to call a bond and a bond is called, that the city contacts the bonding company and the bonding company says, yes, we'll send you a check for the amount of the bond. That's not how it works. What happens is, when a city calls a bond, or whoever has a bond calls it, the bonding company then assumes the task of the developer, and it's the bonding company's responsibility to contract with a contractor to go and do the work in accordance with the plans. And so, you know, it's not a situation where the city can say, well, we're going to go get that fixed, and then the bonding company will just pay us to do it. It doesn't work that way. The bonding company assumes the role of the developer, and then they contract with a contractor to get the work done. In some cases, I've experienced, the bonding company will contract with the contractor who they actually bonded to do the work. And that doesn't always sit well with the city or county that the work is being done, but if you read the bonding language, they reserve that right to do that. So again, it's at no additional cost, the cost that remains the same, and the assurance is that the improvements will be made. But the city can't go out and make those improvements and then get reimbursed, or the city can't even dictate who the contractor is. Sometimes bonding companies will say, hey, can you give us a list of, because a lot of times the bonding companies are cross-country somewhere. So they will say, you know, is there a list of three, four local contractors that have done work there? And then they will coordinate with them to try to get the work done if they desire.
It's very similar to your automobile liability insurance policy. If you read it somewhere in there, it'll tell you if you have, if they have a claim against you, that they have the right to settle it with or without your cooperation. If they figure it's annuance and they're going to settle it, you can scream and holler from now on, they're going to settle it. So if the bonding company wants to hire the guy that just walked out on your job, you'll look up one day and he'll be there.
I think I speak for everyone up here, where I say thank you for that informative talk, Mr. Cantrell and Will. All right, moving on, new business. There is nothing under that. Number nine, going on to reports for discussion and information. We'll start with the planning, zoning codes department.
I do have one item that you might be interested in. After months of your hard work, representatives from Taco Bell came in this afternoon and purchased their building permit and looking to start it within a week or two.
They're going to start building or they're going to start business?
We're looking at tacos around the Fourth of July.
Okay, 9.2, city engineer, Will. Do you have anything?
I don't have anything.
9.3, city attorney.
I promised you I wouldn't say anything else. I'm through. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, number 10, communication from the planning commission members. Mr. Doughty.
Mr. Mitchell. I just had a question. I had several people ask me about Bronland Farms. What's the status of that? There was a sign up there a couple of months ago, and now it's down, and is it active, inactive?
The status has not changed from anything that has been in the last several months or years. They're looking at interest out there to see where they stand, and I believe any approvals they have have expired, so anything that they proceed forward with would have to come back through for reapproval.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Mangram.
Excuse me. I'd like to welcome Mr. Doughty to the planning commission, and then Will touched on bonds and spoke of how good a job we do. That would be impossible without the staff. I'd like to thank the staff for keeping us up to date and informed on those. That's it.
Butler.
Nothing, Mike.
And I just want to say, I spoke with Lisa Anderson earlier, and she's sorry she couldn't make it, and I don't have anything further beyond that. So do I have a motion for adjournment?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
That's it.